A meeting of the village board to order at 7:50 PM. All trustees are accounted for or present except for trustee Ursing, who is expensed. Has this meeting been publicly noticed?
The meeting has been properly noticed and posted according to law.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time, talent, and patience in advance, and apologies for the late start to the meeting. We ran over with our previous two meetings. So we will, let's see, we have some special orders of business this evening. Largely related to the North Shore Fire Department budget process. There are several resolutions in front of us this evening. And as you will recall, each one of these are A, B, C, and E are procedural in nature. The budget needs to be approved by all seven municipalities in order to move forward. And the North Shore Fire Department Board did approve the budget for it to come to us. And item 4C is an overview of a case management position that is included within the scope of the budget, but is not been authorized for hire at this time. And Chief Whitaker will provide a PowerPoint in that regard. So at this time, I would hand it over to Chief Whitaker to give us a brief, a brief definition of what's in each resolution, and then we can take it up for a vote.
Robert, you're muted.
There we go.
Great.
I'll start with 4A. Thank you for your time tonight. And as we go, feel free to, you know, take questions, and I'll do my best to answer them here. So 4A is the single or multi-year capital resolution for 2024 to 2028. The background on this is this is since 2012, the method that the Fire Department with the seven municipalities have funded purchase of major large vehicles, fire engines, ambulances, ladder trucks, and tender trucks. Those are budgeted separately from our annual operating budget because of their cost and for some municipalities bond or borrow for those purchase or their contribution toward those. So tonight, the Fire Department Board has recommended to the seven municipalities to pass this resolution. We normally had been doing these in about four-year increments as part of our capital improvement planning. We've had a couple of things happen over the last couple of years that have had to change the process that we use and make force us to go out further in getting approval for these items because we cannot sign contracts for purchase of these vehicles until we have commitment for funding from the municipalities that that are that support us. Two major items, one, the price increases on these vehicles have gone up tremendously over the last three to four years. That is vendor neutral. We have vendors that we like, but we have looked at all vendors across the board, and their increases are consistent. Alone last year, we saw price increases of about 25% just in one year on the fire engines and the ambulances industry-wide. And that does not take into account the increases that occurred over the more of the COVID pandemic time. As an example, the fire engine that we most recently purchased, we took delivery on in 2022, late 2022. It was contracted for right about the time the pandemic started. We paid about $600,000, $635,000 for purchase of that vehicle. The exact same vehicle that I have a contract for sitting in my email from a vendor is $940,000, just about. That is across the board increases on those vehicles. So that was our one issue that we need to look at, relook at the contributions that come from municipalities for that. The second point is the delivery time. As I said before, waiting, we can't enter into contracts for purchasing these vehicles until we have commitment from the municipalities for contribution. In pre, I'll call it pandemic time, we would be able to get a fire engine in about a year and four months. An ambulance was about a year. Across the board, we are looking at, no matter what vendor we deal with, about a year and a half to two years for an ambulance and three and a half to four years for a fire engine from the day we signed the contract. So we don't see that vehicle for almost four years from the day we agree to purchase it. So that forced us to plan further out so we can get in the queue for purchasing these vehicles. So tonight, we're bringing that back to you. As far as the the options that were evaluated to get to this point, the Fire Department Board assigned it to its finance committee, this issue to look at options presented by staff. We looked at four options. Two had lease purchase type of agreement options in them. The other two were cash payments. So in other words, non-lease, just purchase the vehicle outright. The board's finance committee, after spending a couple of meetings looking at the different options, recommended back to the Fire Department Board to go with a cash purchase option that puts an increase on the municipal contribution for capital or for these purchases in 2026. And that is what is presented for tonight, just from a sake of a dollar amount. That is about in 2026, it's about $124,000 increase in capital contributions toward purchase of these vehicles from Shorewood. Shorewood pays about 18% of the total cost of of our operation. So I guess I'd take any questions if you want to take each item as we move forward here for me.
Yeah, that's typically what we do, right, Chief?
Yep.
Is we, yeah. And I just want to say, the staff did, Chief Whitaker and Ms. Harrigan did a really amazing job presenting this very complicated issue to the finance committee so that we were able to make a recommendation to the full board. I have tried to brief the board on this and because it also pertains to issues that we're seeing within our capital budget moving forward. And so it was very helpful to be briefed on this in advance of our budget process to have that learning curve, I guess shortened just a bit. So with that, I will, does anyone have questions for the chief at this time? Trustee Stokbrand?
I was looking in the packet for, it says Finance Director Harrigan's enclosed memo provides details on the funding requirements, and I couldn't find it. Can someone direct me to the Finance Director's memo?
Are you referring to the Shorewood packet or the, there's a Fire Department packet that is on our website? I just want to make sure we're talking.
It's page 14 of the Village Board Packet for tonight. North Shore Fire Rescue Officer of Fire Chief Robert Whitaker. And I was wanting to read about the budget problems in the memo, and I couldn't find it. But yes, moving on. The thing that is concerning to me is, so in 2021, the North Shore Fire Department Board of Directors decided that we're going to start doing this for your plan, right?
2012.
2012, okay, sorry. And so, and if the if the memo from Director Harrigan is in here, that's great. Just let me know what page I should start on. So in 2012, they decide to do a budget for '22, '23, '24, '25. And now we're not even past the second year of a four-year plan. And the district is saying, oh, it's not enough. We need more. We want a new four-year plan, and we're going to start it sooner. We're going to start it next year.
Right.
And it makes me think, it makes me not feel good about the planning because you start with a four-year plan, you get two years into it, you say it's not enough. So now you start a new four-year plan, and it makes me think, are you going to come back in 2026 and say, oh, we still need more because the equipment's more?
Well, right, so trustee Stokbrand.
Mr. Whitaker?
I understand, I understand. But I'm also going to redirect a bit because the reason why this is coming, this is the reason why the staff, I tried to make this point clear, that the reason why the staff came to the finance committee was because there was this change in the environment and these two, at these two factors.
Understood. Understood.
Increase. So to your point, the only thing that would bring them back is another change in factors. I will defer to Chief Whitaker.
Thank you.
Yep, so.
Anything else to add, Chief Whitaker?
Yeah, I can get you a copy of Finance Director Harrigan's memo. That was in the Fire Department Packet, but specific to the questions. And just to clarify a couple of things, in 2012, the Fire Department Board did a, I believe it was a three-year resolution. And every couple of years since then, they've updated it. So 2012, 2013, 2014, then they did another one, 2015, 2016, 2017, I believe, 2018. So, and then 2019, 2020, and then '21, '22, '23, the one that you just referenced, trustee Stoker ran, the one that's currently in effect. The challenge that was not working, why we had to come back sooner than we expected is because of the lead time on the vehicles. So if we wait to request funding for a vehicle that's supposed to be based on its usage and miles and condition, and we reevaluate those every year. The vehicle that I would like that we need to purchase now under the current single or multi-year capital budget that was passed by the board and the seven municipalities several years ago, I won't see until 2026 or 2027. So the next one, I can't commit to purchase until this resolution goes back and passes. And that vehicle is the next one that I need to sign a contract for likely next year. I won't see that till 2028 at the earliest. So the change in the condition is is specific to, one, the cost, as you referenced, costs went up for the same number of vehicles. We're not replacing more vehicles. We're replacing the same number of vehicles. And then to the lead time to get the vehicle, I need commitment for funding to buy a vehicle because I have to sign a contract now for something I'm going to get in four years.
And so I guess, you know, one of the questions, one of the questions about, you know, the situation we're in is because of COVID and the recession. And as I mentioned in another Village Board meeting, you know, we have like the auto industry is in turmoil, right? And so nobody knows based upon recession how soon that industry is going to climb out of that. And so I guess, you know, I, it'd be nice to see, like Plan A, Plan B. Plan A is we just need to buy more sooner, faster, or we just need, we need to fund everything sooner because we're going to get it later. I guess, you know, it'd be nice to see something like in terms of innovation, creativity. What what can the department offer besides we need more money sooner to buy this equipment?
Yeah, we went through, I can speak from the finance.
And maybe that's the Director's memo that I can't see, Finance Director Harrigan's enclosed memo?
Yeah, we do post all the North Shore Fire Department Board meeting packets under the President's Report, so I don't know what date that would have been in. And so I'm sorry that I can't recall that immediately, but we did, the finance committee actually did ask the Chief and Ms. Director Harrigan to come back with, I believe it was four options. And we chose, I don't know whether, we chose the option that's before you, and then the North Shore Fire Department Board approved that, and that's why it's before us this evening. So that's the procedure. All right, are there other questions from the trustees? Okay, I'm not seeing any hand. Okay.
Are we ready for a motion on first one?
Yes, please.
All right, let me just make sure I have the correct one here. I move to approve Resolution Number 2023-17, a resolution approving a single or multi-year capital budget to purchase large apparatus equipment from 2024 through 2028.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by trustee Lynn. This is a roll, oh, any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Kudo.
Aye.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Nay.
President McCague.
Aye.
Motion carry five-one.
All right, moving on to 4B, Resolution 2023-18, recommending the 2024 North Shore Fire Department fee schedule.
Yep, so, yeah, annually with our budget process, which staff begins in May, we present our first draft of our budget to the Fire Department Board in August. And the fire agreement between the seven municipalities requires the recommendation of a budget to the municipalities by the end of September. As part of that process, we include a fee schedule so we can implement this as part of our budgeting process to project our revenue, not from tax levy. Our fees primarily are for EMS services, but we also have fees for permitting for new construction and then also for some administrative fees like open records requests and then fees for cost recovery on teaching a CPR class where we have supplies and things like that. So that's all included in this recommendation from the board. The EMS fees annually produce about just over $2 million in annual revenue to offset our costs to the municipalities. Those fees are recommended to increase 1.5%. The board traditionally uses, the Fire Department Board uses a barometer of the average of the CPI of medical commodities and medical services for the prior year. That averages out to be 1.5%. That is how the number was determined to be recommended back to the municipalities for costs for change in the fee for EMS services. The inspection and permitting and administrative fees do not change from the prior year. So the change is the 1.5% in the EMS fees. So this does require adoption of five of the seven municipalities that are members of the department to implement. So that's back to to the board here in Shorewood for consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Trustee Stokbrand?
Oops. I guess just given the fact that we're still looking at an inflation environment of 3%, how do you not have any any increases for fire prevention permits expansion inspections, knowing that that involves sending an inspector out to a site?
Yeah. Our fees several years ago were higher than the norm in the area. So it's been my recommendation to keep those fees frozen for several years to bring them back in line with other municipalities in the area. So we are, I guess, I'm recommending to keep them frozen. That's what's coming back from the board.
Okay, I guess that's good information. It would have been helpful in the memo. Thank you.
Noted. Moving on to 4C, overview of case management.
They give you the action.
Oh, you're right. Could I have a motion?
I can do it. I move to approve Resolution. Oh, I'm sorry, I scrolled off. I'm sorry. I've moved to approve Resolution Number 2023-18, a resolution approving the 2024 North Shore Fire Department fees for service schedule.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call as well.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Kudo.
Yes.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Stokbrand.
Nay.
President McCague.
Aye.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Motion carry five-one.
All right, moving on to 4C, overview of the case manager position. I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, the PowerPoint is in your packets. Would you like me to share it on the screen too, or how do you prefer to handle that?
I think if we can manage to screen share, it's better for the residents that are right here.
I can do that. Just give me a quick second. All right. We good on this scene, my screen?
Yep, it looks great.
So we've talked a little bit earlier about cost increases. Another challenge we've had as an organization and actually not just in the North Shore, but in other communities, is the increased reliance on the public for 911 services for what probably many of us would be surprised to hear what people are calling 911 for. So we have an increase in low acuity call volume. We also have an increased reliance on EMS to provide support for residents who may be not able to or not have a full understanding of navigating social services that are available from whether that's local government, county government, or state government. And their default is to rely on the 911 system for support and repeatedly call 911. Last year, in our total patient contacts and just from a sake of discussion, we respond to about 12,000 calls, or we will respond to about 12,000 calls for service in 2023. About 75% of those calls are from medical-related purposes. In 2022, about 1,000 of those calls were from people who called, we had paid, we had contact with five or more times in the calendar year. So repeated users of the system. A lot of times, we find that those same people are, have other social service needs or other challenges. We are also challenged with people who have, I'll come hoarding issues in their homes that a lot of them don't understand the nature of getting assistance, which then leads to other social issues, medical issues, and then dangerous conditions for firefighters in the case of a fire in those buildings. And we we have had several instances of homes that's hoarding that we then have a fire in, and there's there's significant challenges with that. So we had worked on, how can we manage, over the last several years, how can we manage our call volume? The most expensive way to manage increased call volume is to add more firefighter EMTs. And eventually, I don't think we're able to stop that. But we've gone from in the mid, about 2015, about 6,000 calls for service, and this year we'll respond to about 12,000 calls for service. So those numbers are adding up. One of the measures that has been successful in other communities to not stop those increases completely, but to manage a small portion of those increases that are specific to health, ongoing medical and social needs of recurrent users and also of people who have overdose, recurring overdose issues, is to create and use a case manager position in the municipalities. It's been successfully implemented in Oak Creek, Greenfield, and Wauwatosa, where they have had success with using a person who's trained in case management to to help assist people that need assistance in navigating resources that can help them. They're just not aware of them. So as part of our presentation for our 2023 budget was to include a case manager position that's used in conjunction with North Shore Health Department and the Bayside Communication Center to assist these, one, to assist these citizens, but also to help manage the impact it has on our resources. So these are the three consolidated organizations in the North Shore that we consistently work together and have partnership with on seeing many people who have social and medical and recurring needs that we face. There's some background in the packet, but this had been discussed in several different internal methods. One was to to create some sort of method using people who are firefighter paramedics to manage these types of cases that's been successful in some communities. West Dallas uses a model like that. In other communities, they've gone to social worker or caseworker. And through some research and time, and this was delayed with the pandemic because the health department resources were pretty much all directed toward COVID, it was looked at that this position would be probably best filled in our communities with a civilian position at a more cost-effective rate to reduce, to help manage this. And I've been working, I worked extensively with Ann Christensen, who was the previous Health Department Director, who has since moved on to another position, and now with Becky Rolland, the current director, to look at different ways to fund this position. We brought it forward to, in conjunction with the Bayside Communication Center and the Health Department in 2023 for the Board, Fire Department Board to consider a position in the Fire Department slash Health Department slash Communications and with a understanding that it's a multifaceted position. And at the same time, we're seeking some assistance from grant funding through the Community Development, Block Grant Development Fund through Milwaukee County. Just from some background, we see, this is right from our data, but we, our most frequent call for 911 from medical side is someone who's fallen. We've responded to over 2,000 calls for falls, 417 overdoses, and 15% of our patient contacts, as I said before, had contact with EMS six more times in 2022. So we have, we have a number of people that are recurring users of our system, which if we could impact a portion of them, would reduce the reliance on our 911 system response, which is becoming taxed to a point where we're looking to have to add more responders, which is a costly method to do. I don't believe this is the end-all solution to not add more responders in the future. If the call volume and demand on resources continues, this is a way to help manage that. So we're looking at population health, and it's, as I said, a combination effort with two other agencies. Much of this, what we see on a regular basis, like I said earlier, involves human health hazards, which is primarily hoarding. We have frequent callers that call 911 for police, fire, and medical. So there, there's a demonstrated need to try to manage some of those positions, some of those responses and demand on our services. And the current staff were not able in the Health or Fire Department to dedicate time needed to manage these cases. The the position again comes from the three consolidated entities that work together on 911 response. It's not an emergent response. It's not a 24-hour-a-day position. There are communities that have looked and gone to that model. Most of those communities are larger communities that can support call demand for a 24-hour model. We don't have that call demand. And again, this is to basically step into a program to determine the, to make an impact on a portion of our calls, not a 24-hour, like mental health response. Milwaukee County has programs for that. This is more of a day case management referral system where this person would would take referrals from our staff, Health Department, and 911. Some of the, so as part of this process, we've looked at the priorities of the position. There is more work than probably one person can do. But to step into this, in one position, we need to establish priorities. And staff has looked at the priorities of the referrals that come. So assisting, training in other responders, not only fire, but law enforcement. How can we train them to manage on their own some of these systems and problems and challenges with people? And that system, there is currently a referral system in place, but we've, we've picked. And that system, there is currently a referral system in place, but we've we've picked our four priorities of overdose. The significant challenge in all communities in this area on overdoses, in fact, across the country. And how can we provide resources to a person who overdoses so that does not happen again? Unfortunately, we see the same people overdosing again multiple times. And getting them help would reduce that and save lives. What this isn't is it's the case manager isn't a building inspector. It's not a zoning or code enforcement. It's not a law enforcement social worker. And like I said before, it's not a 24 hour urgent protective need or service. In other communities, we've talked to the Greenfields, the Wauwatoshas, the Oak Creeks and said, what's gone well, what hasn't gone well? Again, here's a couple of things that this, what this case person is not meant to do. This isn't a truancy management. It's not chasing down kids who aren't in school. This is not for that program. So that, like I said earlier, the primary focus would be human health hazards, more the hoarding situations, overdoses, supporting multiple nine one one calls for mental health and falls. And then other referrals that might come to the agency, it's a current referral system that the Health Department has. But again, the staff is not able to manage the time and the commitment or resources needed to to do this full time, and we have the volume for that. So we want to establish prior measures to then come back and talk about outcomes and look at this and say, is it successful or not in a year or so? So we're setting up 23 baseline data. When we'll refer and come back to outcomes and look at the reporting mechanism back to the city administrator and the village managers and and look at how we can best then navigate and make changes to the position as we go. Each of the communities we've talked to that have used this position have said, hey, we learned this in the first year and we adjusted something. We've we've changed this or we've done that, made small changes to it. So that case manager isn't going to necessarily always be the problem solver of the problem. They're going to direct people, and that's what this is intended to be. Direct them to the right resources that are out there. It's just navigating those resources for people we've, I found, even from personal experience with some family members. It's challenging to navigate healthcare systems and social support systems. Milwaukee County has behavioral behavioral health division. They have a crisis mobile team, teleprotective services, aging and disability resource, impact two on one. There's a lot of opt, a lot of offerings out there, but it's navigating that, and that's what our intention with this position is. So the next steps, as we move forward, the Fire Department Board discussed this and approved in the recommended budget to include that in the Fire Department budget. We are in the process with the Health Department seeking $50,000 in funding from CBDG to offset some of those costs. But how that funding cycle works is not concurrent with annual budgeting. So the position is included in the budget for 2023 that's recommended. We need to finalize an MOU between the participating agencies. And that the cost sharing primarily is referencing the the grant money and how that is funded and who the financial agent for that grant is. Then the operational responsibilities, since there's three entities involved in this, we want to make sure it's clear as to the supervision and direction and 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 success, measures of success of the position. That will go back to the Fire Department Board in November. The Board did vote not to fill the position until all these steps are completed, which we are working on now, but as far from a budgeting standpoint, we're a calendar year budget. So we need, we needed to include this in our budget at the time. So with that, I would take any questions that might be out there.
And I can fill in from the perspective of the the Fire Department Board. There is no, there is agreement that a step like this is necessary, given the increasing reports that we've gotten for month over month, and especially with the just the exponential complexity of needs that were, that was created by the pandemic conditions and are not, they don't just go away. I, I actually, because some of these, some of the information that's presented tonight wasn't available at the time that we took a vote. Even though I support this this position and feel that it is the right thing to do and applaud the staff for doing the work to bring it forward to be considered with the 2024 budget. I did vote no at that time to establish that we really needed some more information before we adopted the full budget. So I want to thank Chief Whitaker and the rest of the partners for bringing that together, putting it in a PowerPoint, exploring the MOU, and it is satisfactory in my mind how it's moved forward. And I can fully support this being included in the 2024 budget. And I would urge my colleagues this evening to do the same. And I know that in a year, we are going to have a lot more information. And I do believe that we have the professionals and skill sets on hand to make very good use of these funds and also to do some data driven procedure and operational realignment to make better use, you know, to to really meet the this increasing demand. So with that, I will, I wanted to fill that part in from the representative aspect. And then I would take questions from the body at this time.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I think this is a really great idea, really smart. And yeah, I would really support this. And I also really appreciate the thorough presentation. Thorough presentation, including just, you know, the measurements. I know, you know, some neighboring communities are pretty new at this. You know, we don't necessarily have a ton of learnings from them. I was just wondering, you know, elsewhere in the country, have we seen things like this where we might have a read on what some of the longer term benefits might look like?
Yeah. You know, I mentioned a couple of the local ones. City of Madison has been a leader in this. They use a little bit of a different form to do, deliver the service. And and so it's not exactly 100% what we're proposing here, and it's on a bigger scale. They have a greater 24 hour demand and need, and they've been able to expand it. But I sat, talked to their chief and there's people there and learned a lot from them. There's a couple of other models in the Texas. This became popular in Texas. Austin is one of the communities where it's become popular. And there, there's a medical system there. The medical provider there is called MedStar, and they're one of the leaders in the industry of EMS as to what they're doing. And they've successfully used this system. They they actually, we sent someone down there a couple of years ago to actually look at how they do all this. They offer sort of the the come down and learn what we're doing model. And we've looked at that. So we've been able to garner different ways to do this from different places. And there's ongoing studying and research on this that we're really closely monitoring because I think our our industry in general is challenged with this across the board, not just in the seven North Shore communities, but across the country.
Thank you.
Other questions? Oh, Trustee Baldoff.
Thank you. Yeah. So I, my first question is, this isn't slated for any action tonight, right?
Correct.
Great. And then just the comment that definitely, you know, support this. I think this is great. Appreciate that. We're monitoring research from other, you know, communities. But I think we've seen, like you went through in the PowerPoint, a number of other programs and interventions that have been really successful in the area, you know, like the CART teams, the Crisis Intervention Services. So anytime we are expanding capacity, you know, for folks who are able to deal with things that are non emergent and leave our, you know, first responders free to respond to actual emergencies, like that's going to be, that's going to be a good thing. So definitely happy to support this when it comes back to us at some point.
So it actually, when we adopt the budget or when you, you can voice support by voting yes on the next resolution, right?
And I'll, I'll look forward to doing that very soon.
Trustee Stockbrand.
Thank you. I guess my first question would be, so are you getting complaints with the current model that you're not? I mean, I have people in my neighborhood. I know two people who called nine one one. They actually were welfare checks because they had both fallen down, and they were both extremely pleased with the response time that they got from North Shore Fire. And so I guess my first question is, I mean, I understand this. I can support this, but my question is adding adding personnel to do this instead of working within your budget that you currently have. So like, could you do job sharing? Could you, because adding people is extremely expensive. And one of our problems in Shorewood is affordable housing. And so trying to work within the numbers that you have, could you have someone do a job share? Could you attrition a firefighter and add a caseworker? You know what I'm saying? Instead of adding a whole new job, which is in my, and I'm guessing it's going to be 125,000. And once you get in, that's an annual expense. What can you do with the numbers you have without adding an FTE? What ideas do you have to work within your numbers? Because I I'm not aware of any complaints about response times. And, you know, I I understand maybe you don't want to go to fallen down, people who fall down, you don't want to go to hoarders, you don't want to go to, you know.
That is not the sentiment that was brought forward in the PowerPoint.
You know, my question is to Mr. Whitaker. So if you could please allow me the courtesy of asking him a question and having him respond. I'm just telling you.
Option with the tone and the speculation that the staff does not want to respond to these cases. So I wanted to redirect a bit. If you have a question, you can direct the question.
Yeah, I I can respond to that. So the our initial budget that came from staff to the Fire Department Board was to, we need to add another ambulance to our capacity. Our initial response times are good, like you said, and we don't, I tell you, we don't get response time complaints. If you look at our data, our response time is extending. And the call volume on a, from a curve standpoint is going up. And the method to manage that, I believe from a nine one one standpoint, is to add another ambulance to the street. That is an expensive venture. It's more expensive than a case manager. That's six, that's six people to add one ambulance 24/7. So the model currently that we are working on, one was to fund that ambulance through non tax levy revenue. Unfortunately, some legislation that passed that would have increased our reimbursement rates for Medicaid patients didn't include all Medicaid patients. And so the revenue projections were not what we thought they were going to be, which we thought that was going to be sufficient to cover costs for that capacity. The case manager is a position that we feel can make a difference in us. We're not going to cut our, we're not going to stop the increase in the call volume. It's going to specifically target people who are frequent users of the system as a means to reduce that, to maintain those response times and be proactive to get to that point where we don't have ongoing response time problems. There's, we've, there's other factors that go into response times and the capacity and demand on our staff is is going up. And we go to falls all day. That's regular responses. And unfortunately, falls end up being the highest admission rate for all the ERs in our zip codes that we serve. So when we meet with Ascension, we meet with Aurora, that's the highest admission rate. That's a costly backend for them on patients who fall a broken hip, as many people probably know, in elderly person is a long term care issue. So to get ahead of that, as people stay in their homes longer, we feel this position is going to be a positive as far as helping to manage a small portion and also creating a healthier place too.
And I I support the position. I just, I would like to see you work with your FTEs that you have available and make that position happen because it will decrease your calls, as you're saying.
Yeah. Yeah.
The, yeah, and I can also add that the there were staff present who gave multiple case examples of how the the current staff has done this type of case management. And also the the data analysis that exceeds, it's, it's not just this year and this particular set of conditions around call volume, but looking at that 2018 report and that 2015 report, that this has been an ongoing data analysis. So yeah, I mean, to your point, Trustee Stockbrand, just to rest assured that the the EMT staff is is still essentially doing this type of work as well. But this will offload that. Let's see. So there are no other questions. We can move on to four E, which is a resolution 2023 dash 20, a resolution to unanimously recommend amendment number nine to the North Shore Fire Department Agreement to provide general non policy cleanup of the North Shore Fire Department Agreement.
Yeah. So this agreement, the North Shore Fire Agreement has been in effect since 1994. There's been, this would be the ninth amendment. Eight of those amendments have primarily been substant, what I'll call substantive policy change.
I think we're at four D. I apologize.
Levy limit. Okay. Four D is the levy limit, correct?
Yeah, that's a resolution 2023 dash 19 recommending adoption of a resolution allowing an option for member municipalities of the North Shore Fire Department to an exception to the levy limits for charges for the North Shore Fire Department pursuant to 2005 Wisconsin Act 484.
Okay, we got that one. So 2005, the state adopted a statute that provided a levy limit exception for municipalities contributions to a joint fire department. So in other words, if your municipality is serviced by a joint fire department as a means to encourage communities to cooperate and consolidate services. In 2005, the state adopted this as part of its levy limit exception list. So in 2016, the Fire, North Shore Fire Department Board first used the levy limit or recommended using it to the seven municipalities. Each by state statute, all seven municipalities need to pass a resolution authorizing use of this, even if they don't plan to use that levy limit exception. So several of the municipalities in the shore do use this levy limit exception. But by state statute, all seven members of the Fire Department municipal governing bodies need to pass this. So that's why it's back for you tonight.
All right. Are there any questions? Or a motion to approve?
I can make a motion. I move to approve resolution number 2023 dash 19 in the matter of authorizing an exception to the levy limits for charges for the North Shore Fire Department pursuant to 2005 Wisconsin Act 484.
Second.
All right, motion by Trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by Trustee Arndorfer. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
President McKay.
I.
Trustee Stockbrand.
I.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Kudo.
Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Hi.
Trustee Lynn.
Hi.
Motion carries six zero.
Thank you. Item four E, resolution 2023 dash 20. Now we're caught up and this is regarding the cleanup of the North Shore Fire Department Agreement.
Yep. So as I probably started to say and jumped ahead too quick, but there's been nine, this would be the ninth amendment. Eight amendments prior have been more substantive changes. At the board's urge, we wanted to update the agreement more for administrative matters without including any substantive policy matter changes, just to get the update, get it cleaned up. It really had never been cleaned up. So there are four changes that are detailed as recommended by the board directors to the seven municipalities. This requires all seven member communities to approve it. Doesn't necessarily mean to be unanimous at this level, but majority of the board has to approve this. Two of them relate to a election of officer dates, one for the fire, Joint Fire Commission, one for the Joint Board. The original agreement had that occurring in January. The board has traditionally delayed that until May to get past the spring election date. The board has traditionally delayed that until May to get past the spring election dates to know who's actually appointed to the board. So you don't elect a board and then four months later have to make changes to that board. And then the other, the one agreement aligns CPI dates in the agreement. There were two different dates that CPI numbers were picked from. So it aligns them both to be September 30th. And then the final one is the bank at which the department uses, which determines an interest rate. If a community were not to make a timely payment, the agreement specifically called out First Tower Bank, which one does not exist any longer. And two, a recommendation would be to use the bank at which the board has approved the fire department to use. So the board approves an official bank of the department. And to make that, I guess, a neutral statement in the agreement in case that bank changes, then it does require changing the the actual fire agreement. So those are the changes that are included. And that's back to you for approval, hopefully.
Any questions or a motion? This is general housekeeping.
Correct.
Happy to make a motion.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. I move to approve, sorry, I thought I had it. Get it handy. If somebody else has it handy and wants to do it, otherwise I am scrolling to get there. All right. Um. Why am I not seeing it?
I can make a Resolution Number 2023-20, a resolution approving amendment number nine to the North Shore Fire Department Agreement to amend and restate the financing formula in Exhibit C.
Okay. Motion by trustee Stockbrand, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any discussion?
I just wanted to mention, if you get the case manager and you don't have room in your new department, Health and Fire Department, we have an office available in Shorewood.
Got it.
A sales pitch. All right, this will be a roll call vote.
Trustee Moore Baldoff.
Yes.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Kudo.
Yes.
Trustee Arndorfer.
Aye.
Trustee Stockbrand.
Aye.
President McKay.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
All right. I believe that concludes all our North Shore Fire Department business for the evening.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief Whitaker. Have a good night.
Too.
Thank you.
He's on the North Shore tour. I think he has Whitefish Bay tonight also, and then two tomorrow night. Yeah. All right, give him my best. 4F, consider change order number two for Village Hall first floor renovation. This would be village manager.
Yes, and with me tonight, we have Connor Fisher, who is the architect on the project. Hi Connor, thanks for joining us. I'm going to turn it over to you to run through the change order.
Okay. Hello, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, our construction project is well underway and it is approaching substantial completion. Hopefully you've gotten a chance to see it. I would say it's been a a great success so far. This is a complicated little project. Old historic building. You uncover things, things kind of change. And so our construction process has been one of just kind of adapting and working collaboratively to get sure with the best project we can. With that, since we proposed the bid to you and awarded the bid, a few things have added cost to the project. There's a long kind of little grocery list of things. We've kept it high level for you and have broken it into three buckets. Bucket one is basically things we've added to the project to enhance it. We opened up a wall where we thought something was going to be and there was nothing there. So we worked really fast to create a useful printer alcove with a countertop and cabinets and outlets, things like that. We changed a few materials to materials that are just better and more durable. Bucket two is, call it unforeseen conditions. You open up walls and you find electrical things that the electrician needs to deal with, code things. A few walls we opened up had big electrical home runs in them that needed to be moved out of the way. And the basement also proved pretty difficult to work around. Just there's a lot of existing conditions down there. The last bucket is sort of scope we added into the project or awarded the general contractor, things that needed to happen to make the project happen. There's a lot of data cabling that got rerun, new data outlets, basically to provide more connection points for the clerk, the clerks area. That was basically something we were looking at a few different avenues of how to make that construction part happen. And we ultimately gave it to the general contractor. So it looks like an added scope. It's really, we just awarded them more scope. So with that, we have bundled this all into change order two. The project is approaching completion and we we believe this is going to be it. So.
All right, thank you. So we are being asked to consider and approve the change order. I will say that I've taken a walk through. It is absolutely amazing, the transformation. I couldn't be more excited for the completion. Just architecturally, really beautiful.
Thanks.
Other questions or a motion?
I'm happy to make the motion.
Okay.
Once we got a hand up.
Oh, there's a hand. Apologies. Trustee Stockbrand. Oh, I think you might.
I apologize. This is not part of the change order, but I haven't seen this in the ARCA funding list before, $20,000 fixtures furniture for Village Hall improvements. Could we please have a recap?
Sure, that was actually identified with the initial project and scope of cost. I just broke it out between the two for for this itemization. Because we didn't have it on the list reflected the last time. But yep, we had initially approved a budget of 20,000 for furnitures and fixtures or things that we would otherwise be buying ourselves. So some of this included work that we've done for public works. One example would be, we ordered all new LED lights without gold rimmed fixtures to put into the to the first floor. That's made a significant bright effect in that, in that corridor and area. Another would be, you know, a counter in the middle of the lobby area that we will see hopefully in the near future as a station for people to complete checks and and work out things, but primarily things that were not hard construction.
And so we have three full-time and one part-time employee in this area. Is that correct? And so like, everybody gets a new desk, everybody gets a new chair.
Actually, we're trying, we're going to be looking forward to setting up existing cubicles that we have to try to reutilize what we do have in the clerks area with three workstations. So we're looking forward to trying to put together that puzzle of some existing equipment we have to see what that would be. We're also repurposing desks. A desk in the court clerk location. For purposes of furniture. We will be purchasing those, some rolling tables for the the elections equipment that's going to be on the side. And we purposely have not ordered them first because we wanted to get the cubicle set so that we could have some better measurements in terms of really thinking about what we need, if any.
It sounds like the biggest ticket item here individually was the rolling counter cover, the $12,000. It must be a custom-made rolling something.
Sure. So if you've seen it, there's the new kind of front service counter service desk. This is, it's basically called, it's a security shutter that comes down at the end of the night to lock up. A lot of other municipalities have it and it's a, it's a big ticket item. It's expensive.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I move to approve change order number two to Duffett Construction for a total construction budget of 179,917.65.
Second.
Motion by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor, or is this a roll call? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you.
Item 4G, review outline of work for university historic preservation evaluation project. There's a memo in our materials as well as a, there's a PowerPoint too, right?
And joining us tonight is Sam Kaufman, who is our student with the university program from Madison, who's been assigned to this, this project. Welcome, Sam. We've had an opportunity to start work together and he's coming tonight to run through his presentation with you to kind of give you the overview of what he's going to be covering and when you can look forward to hearing from him in the future and be engaged as we move forward.
Appreciate it. So we'll get that screen share going and look forward to hearing the presentation. I anticipated that everyone has reviewed it already. It shouldn't be 100% new, but it'll be nice to see it on the big screen and also good for members of the public.
So thank you very much. I apologize for my horse voice. I've been ill the last few days, but I'll get through this, I promise. I'm Sam Kaufman. I'm a junior at UW Madison studying poly sci and geography. I'm also in my second term on the Wannakee Village Board. So I've, I've been in your shoes and we've commissioned university projects ourselves, which is one of the reasons actually why I'm here this evening is because when we commissioned our projects, one of my biggest grievances was that it was not really interactive with the board. By the time the project was over, it just sort of felt like a bomb was dropped on us. And then all of a sudden, I'm getting a magazine clipping that we received an award for this project that I know nothing about, which is certainly not what I want in your case at all. So I'm going to share my screen here. I've never used Teams before, so excuse me for a moment. You can see it? That good? It's a sharing tab. Okay, great. So I figured I'd start with some of the positives, of course, of what your community has done. I I visited the village in September, met with Rebecca and Kathy Keane from the Historical Society. You have a wonderful, wonderful historic society. Can't say enough positive things about what a well-oiled machine they are. Really liked the way y'all did the the fire station and the restoration. I know that was an extensive project, but it looks lovely. I really like the birthday marker program that you do. You know, it's nice for kids and pedestrians and so forth to walk around and, you know, see those markers and it really shows the pride that property owners have in their, in their homes in the village. And I really appreciated the architectural survey. That was a very thorough and helpful resource for me as I did a little bit of research on the community. So obviously, one of the first things that you hear about when you think about historic preservation as a, you know, commission, you know, if you look straight in state statutes, it says right in there, Historic Preservation Commission. What a lot of communities do in order to meet the requirements of the state statute is they designate that responsibility to their plan commission. In some cases, it's others. Sometimes you have a separate commission. Here, you know, you have a design review board. Obviously, the community is, you know, built out any development that you're going to have is is going to be redevelopment. You know, it already has design professionals, architects and so forth as members. It it can meet that statutory requirement because it is a committee. You know, often in a lot of communities, this is a separate committee, but it does require staff time, obviously have defined members. Another con that I noticed later is your design review board does not have trustees on it, which is fine. But obviously, if you want to be involved in the process of historic preservation, that's something worth considering. And a lot of times, at least what I've seen with some of the historic preservation commissions in the Madison area is many of them are in communities with strong historical societies. And oftentimes, those functions are blurred, where they're just sort of blending together. There's not a whole lot of delineation between the functions of the two and there's just too much overlap to where those responsibilities aren't clearly defined all that well. And obviously, you know, if you're going to be considering through the DRB, a Historic Preservation Commission component, that's obviously going to require some more meetings. You know, it could be case by case, you know, where there's a particular property that there needs to be a discussion about or you know, quarterly or whatever. That's obviously something to consider. Now, there is a state tax credit program for historic homes that does exist. There are federal programs, but those are mainly for commercial properties and not particularly relevant to the discussion here. Can fund up to 25% of qualified expenditures for a restoration project in a home. A lot of people frankly do not know it exists. You know, an easy way simply to do that is, you know, I heard from the librarian at the Historical Society, that a lot of folks come in, they want to see plans of their homes, the blueprints and so forth. And that would be a great opportunity for some sort of paper pamphlet as well as, you know, mentioning it perhaps every once in a while in the manager's memo or so forth to share, you know, this is the program that exists. This is how it works. You have to go through all these different steps with construction plan review. There is a separate program for commercial buildings that could be done, but obviously, most of your older buildings are residential. So that's where the focus would be. It does take a bit for the Historical Society Preservation Architects to review any plans for improvements. It requires a lot of documentation and and so forth to, you know, make sure that the Secretary of the Interior requirements are met. And a lot of architects, you know, you you often need a very specialized architect to complete the project. At least here, most of the ones that I know are former Historical Society employees themselves. And obviously, you know, there there's a federal program, but it's only for commercial buildings. Now, you can become a certified local government. There are a number of communities in Milwaukee County that are already certified local governments. I believe South Milwaukee was the first one. I believe there's a couple others that I don't remember off the top of my head. But basically, what it allows you to do is there is a Wisconsin Historic Preservation Fund that exists based on a, it's a National Park Service law that was passed in the 1960s. But in essence, from the Historic Preservation Fund allocation that the state gets from the federal government, you can then apply for grants and it's much easier to get the funds that way. NRHP is the National Register of Historic Places. You do have a few of those properties already in the village, but certainly there are others that could be eligible. So the village would have the ability to formally comment on any of those nominations before sending it, before it gets sent along to the state Historic Preservation Review Board for approval. You can also make use of Chapter 11 of the International Existing Building Code or IEBC for locally designated historic buildings. And obviously, the con here, which we'll address a little more later, is you have a 1995 Historic Preservation ordinance, but it needs to be a little bit stronger and have a little bit more teeth to be eligible. Local historic designation must not require owner consent, which in many communities has been a sticking point and why they have not implemented this. I mean, it does also require annual reporting to the State Preservation Office on CLG activities. Another point that just popped in my head pertaining to the previous slide is that the pamphlet would also be a great benefit to the real estate community. A lot of realtors do not know that these tax credit programs exist. There tends to be a lot of misinformation in that field, certainly here in in Wannakee where I live. In terms of determining what projects are eligible, you know, are there restrictions on my home? What can I do? What can't I do? So that would be a really excellent opportunity for education, whether it's on the website, you know, paper pamphlets are great, etc. So historic districts, full disclosure, I'm not a huge fan of them. I'm not aware of a whole lot of communities recently creating any sort of historic districts. Yes, it does give you that strong layer of protection from significant changes to a particular neighborhood, view shed, property, etc. You can modify the rear of a home as long as it's not visible from the street. Obviously, that would be subject to whatever the design review board determines. You just have to have a consistent appearance in the front, which is a big. Obviously, that would be subject to whatever the design review board determines. You just have to have a consistent appearance in the front, which is a big concern. Especially for older people buying a home, you know, they want to age in place. They want to have a bedroom on the first floor, a mudroom in the back, et cetera. But a lot of folks are concerned because, you know, the additional restrictions that could be placed on them. I know many property owners myself who have totally restored their historic homes, but they'll never put their property on the National Register of Historic Places because they simply do not want those strings attached. They want to keep, you know, their little addition on the back with the attached garage. They want to be able to make it so they can age into their home rather than leave it period and potentially have to move and sell, you know, if it's been in their family for generations, it's obviously understandable why they would want to keep it. So your nineteen ninety-five historic preservation ordinance, obviously it already exists, but in terms of actual implementation of it, there are a number of legal issues with how it's structured. You have to have a separate process for local property designation that, again, you know, does not allow for objection from a property owner. It does make sure that you can comply with the CLG certified local government requirements to receive grant funding. It also gets you steps closer to some objectives outlined in chapters two and five of your twenty forty comp plan about, you know, educating the public on historic preservation and getting some of those districts created. Those were on a one to five-year horizon from when the plan was passed in twenty twenty-one, so obviously, you know, we're year two of that. Your biggest cons there are, you know, it requires staff and attorney time to change it. Obviously, lawyers aren't cheap, you know, if you want to give an ordinance teeth and restructure how it's written. And even as it exists now, you know, you currently have a hundred and twenty-one properties actually that are currently identified under this ordinance. But because there is no objection process that currently exists, that's where you could get into some legal trouble. So regardless of, you know, how you feel about any of these, you know, historic preservation issues, that's really something that merits addressing. Let's see. I will also add that in Wannakee, one thing that we've done, obviously, just simply from this meeting tonight and conversations with folks I've had in the village in general, is affordable housing is a huge issue. It's something that the village of Wannakee has done, which has been done in the city of Manasha and other places, is using the one-year extension of a TIF district, which becomes an affordable housing fund. We were able to use some of those funds to rehab some of our older housing stock in the form of grants to homeowners, because our big concern was we have a lot of issues. As I've noticed in your community as well with redevelopment, you know, property owners concerned about setbacks, height, et cetera. And we were really concerned about people, particularly with rental properties near the central core of our community, letting those properties go to seed and then selling them for top dollar for a redevelopment, so which is why we started that grant program. Again, it's very preliminary. Obviously, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if that's specifically an issue in your community with properties, you know, going to seed and so forth. I don't think so from driving around, but again, something else you could consider with those funds. So how I would like to proceed is I'm going to draft a Qualtrics survey and I emphasize, you know, survey is a bit of a dirty word sometimes. The public often gets over surveyed and doesn't really get to the specific point of what needs to be done, but it's going to pertain to specific items that I outlined, you know, do you want, would you like to see the ordinance have more teeth? Are you, would you like to have, you know, due process available for objections and so forth? That'll be sent out to all of you via email for, you know, so you can weigh in on it, any question that you'd like. Again, I want this to be a process where board members feel that they can engage and have a conversation about, you know, the process and so forth. We'll communicate it through, you know, a variety of ways, your manager's memo, that seemed to get a pretty good penetration from some of your other surveys that I've looked at, that you've done. Paper copies at the library, obviously is a really important one. That's something that we realized the hard way here in Wannakee when we were trying to do a survey and we missed out on a lot of really valuable input that way. And then the goal, which again, I may adjust slightly based on my final exam schedule and how things play out, is I'd like to come out in person to the second board meeting that you have in December and present my findings. So really what I'm looking for from you tonight is just to have a discussion about what you've seen here. Is there something that, you know, is totally off the table? Is there something else that you'd like me to look into more? Something perhaps that I haven't looked into at all? What jumps out to you, et cetera? And again, there's some of the links that I've looked at, the presentations of the tablet packets, so any members of the public who'd like to view those are certainly welcome to do so. And again, there's my contact information. Any of you are welcome to reach out to me at any time you'd like. Don't worry about bothering me. Again, I want this to be an interactive process where you feel like you can engage with me so this, you can get the results that you and your community would like to see. So with that, I'll take any questions from board members.
I was a little confused when you started talking about the extending the TID for the purposes of affordable housing. That was not as an option, that was not included in the PowerPoint.
No, that was, that was something that just sort of, the reason is we just actually rolled out that program to the public the other day. So it sort of popped into my head after I sent the presentation into the packet. I will send out to Rebecca some more details on that program for you to review.
Is it going to be included in the survey? I, I would say no, just because we haven't.
Yeah, I would, I would say no, again, because it's so preliminary and your circumstances are a little different, but I do think it would be to the board's benefit to at least read about the program. Because perhaps something down the line, it's something that you could mull over, but certainly, no, I would agree. It's not something that you need to do right away now at all.
Okay, so really the, the survey will pertain to the scope of the presentation that we sought to.
Correct, correct.
Okay. And all the supporting documentation is linked on that final slide.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. Other questions?
Trustee Stokbrand, yes, sir.
I, I just thought, trustee Stok-
Thank you. I just had two questions. First, is there any way to generalize what happens to real estate sales if you adopt the more aggressive historic preservation model?
Say to that, you know, it really depends on the community that you're in and how willing, you know, the, the property owners in that community are, are willing to have restrictions on their property. You know, in some cases, you know, people, you know, immediately people will put their home up for sale because they don't like that, you know, their windows have to be changed to a certain type or whatever. And obviously, again, you already have a design review board, so you have some of those parameters already in place that residents are familiar with. So I would say most likely, in the, in the case of your community, I don't think in general it would have a huge impact on home sales because, you know, people are moving to Shorewood and staying there, like there's a reason you all live there and one of those reasons is because you like the character and charm of the community that's already there.
Okay, and my other question would be, it's just sort of an observation. In order to get meaningful survey results, I would just, I wonder if this is something where, and I don't know if we have any money, but it just seems like it would be better to do an outreach instead of just whoever happens to see the manager's memo and responds to a survey. You know, that to me is, it's can be meaningful, but it's not necessarily very scientific, for lack of a better word. And I just wonder if this is a, a position, a place where we should think if we go into, go into the next budget year, should we do like a postcard to everybody, so every household gets a, a postcard or, you know, an email or something? So we literally know we've targeted every household with links of information to go to this website, get information and fill out the survey. I just throw that out as an idea. Thanks.
Yeah, I appreciate that suggestion. That's certainly something we've done here as well and certainly that's something that the board and staff could consider in further conversations.
Any other questions? I see we have Kathy Keen, president of the Historical Society. Is there anything that you'd like to share?
Can you, am I muted?
You are here. I can hear you.
We can hear you, Kathy.
I'm just, of course, very interested in the whole conversation and we in the Historical Society have been trying to raise awareness about these issues. It always seems to me before a survey goes out that people ought to be aware of what they're really being surveyed for. Emotional decisions and, oh, I think this is what it is versus what might be the real parameters are, what, something that I think is seriously to be considered before we do a survey. I'm trying to think of how we would best get the information out. But we, we could work with the village board, the trustees, whoever would like to have us be of service in that way. Right off the top of my head, I, Sam has a semester program in which he's involved, so I guess we, but we want it to be usefully used. That's why working too fast doesn't give us the results. Not moving for a long time also doesn't give us results. My, off the top of my head thought.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it does strike me, it's very technical information and so it would be interesting to see what kind of, how we can use a survey tool to get meaningful results. I see, I see the issue. Kathy, questions?
Definitely, I would definitely include a, a question in there just because I've seen in some of your other surveys about where specifically people are, are getting the survey, where are they seeing it, just for everyone's benefit in terms of what communication methods are people using to try and get information about local issues?
Thank you. And Kathy, does, do any of these tools for historic preservation, do they align with what the Historical Society has been discussing?
Oh, yeah. So much of this is, is terminology that some people know about and we've two years ago, we, in the village, we worked with the village manager and we had the three-part session where we informed people and, and Sam was using some of that material just now. You're, the, the, the issue when we get into the technical weeds, we, we right away jump to people's conclusions without the, the, the insight. We don't have to do it anyway. Other villages have done it. We also can make benefit to clear up some of the myths. And that's what we, we could run another program or we could make some material, make a list of materials available. Sam had that idea too. But how much people would understand before they answer. But most of the people who would answer a survey will show some interest. And if they do misunderstand stuff, we know places we could work with them after, after you've got some more material. We have so many people that are showing interest in their houses and there's so many people now that are stepping forward who are new to the village and want to know more about why they came here.
All right, thank you very much. I guess I, if I continue asking questions, I'll be way out of scope of the agenda, I know. But I think it helps me frame the presentation a little bit more. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, is there any direction that you need from us at the time?
I don't think so. I was sort of pretty much looking for the discussion that we already had here. Unless anybody else has any other questions, I think I have the general direction that I need to move forward.
All right, trustees or members of the public? Show of hands? Or, I mean, or come off mute?
No, thank you, thank you for presenting and thank you for what you're working on. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Sam.
Thank you.
Sam, really good stuff.
Yeah, it's exciting. All right, moving on, I believe that concludes all of our special orders of business this evening, so we can move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Great. Motion by trustee Lynn. Second by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any discussion? I'd like to pull five B. Anything else? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda with the exception of four B, say aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item six. Items removed from the consent agenda. I just pulled the minutes because there was mention of my recommendation to start an ash tree task force and that was actually not a serious recommendation. So I just thought we might want to remove that from the minutes. So that was my only, so I would make a motion to approve the minutes with the exception of, of that.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye or show of hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Motion carries. And I will say, Clark Carroll, excellent job on taking notes. It's glad, I'm glad to know I'm heard when I speak. All right, we now can move on to hearings. We have none. Item eight, citizens to be heard. This item is for matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to be heard? Sorry, I just lost track of my teams. Okay, are there any citizens who would like to be heard this evening? Raise your hand or come off mute. All right, seeing none, we can move on to new business. Nine A, consider notice of settlement of the PFAS class action lawsuit. This comes to us from manager Ewald and it is, there's a memo in our packet outlining with opinion from attorney Bear with a recommended motion to direct submission of required paperwork to be considered for opting into the PFAS suit. Are there any questions at this time? Is there a motion?
I can make a motion.
Okay, trustee Arndor first.
I move to direct submission of required paperwork to be considered for opting into the PFAS suit.
Second.
A motion by trustee Arndor for a second and by trustee Moore Baldoff. Any discussion? Trustee Stokbrand? You're on mute?
So initially, there's no cost to us in terms of attorney's fees or anything. We just joined the lawsuit.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to nine B. The computer's getting tired. Next item will be nine B, consider professional services agreement for Capital Drive pedestrian evaluation. This comes to us with a memo after several times of discussion. Are there any questions or emotion?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay. And trustee Stokbrand, did you want to ask a question before trustee Lynn makes a motion?
It can be after the motion.
Okay.
I move approval of Strand Associates Task Order twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, Capital Drive South One Ninety Pedestrian Evaluation with outlined tasks to be compensated on an hourly rate basis and in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
All right, motion by trustee Lynn, seconded by trustee Moore Baldoff. And trustee Stokbrand, you also did make a statement in the previous meeting. And trustee Stokbrand, you also did make a statement in the previous meeting, committee, the whole, with regards to the budget. Question or comment?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I don't see pavement paint mentioned anywhere in here is, is that, does the state not care? Could we repaint the crosswalks now if we wanted to? Because I don't see it addressed anywhere. Pavement painting?
That was my understanding.
That's, that's correct. That is not an item that the state requires, for which the state requires approval.
Okay, so, but I thought we had a discussion at one point about trying to put in some more dynamic painting besides a regular crosswalk, you know, something with some more, a more dramatic paint scheme to sort of draw the attention of drivers. And and I thought, I was in the impression.
Is there, is there someone on the call who is not muted at this time? Can everybody please mute?
I guess it would just be good for clarity for people's expectations. Can we fix the paint pavement on the, on the crosswalks in a regular scheme now? Or even with a more dynamic paint scheme on our own without WISDOT approval?
WISDOT approval is not required for standard pavement markings. So anything that is defined in the federal uniform manual, which is the ladder crosswalks that we currently have. We have been previously advised that WISDOT would not approve any type of pavement marking that was non-standard. That question has come up a couple of times, I would say, in the last half dozen or so years at various points where people have requested that we look at some sort of a more decorative crosswalk. And that, as I said, that, that's been made very clear to us that that would not be approved. That was not something that was requested in the traffic and parking regulation request of July 3rd, 2023. I mean, it really has not been anything that we have discussed to this point. Therefore, it was not included in the scope of work.
Okay, so my recollection is different. I thought that we had talked a lot about trying to repaint the crosswalks.
We, we have spoken about re-marking the crosswalks, but there would be no change to the current markings. It would simply be a refresh, a refresh to improve potentially improve their reflectivity.
Okay, so I guess that's what, if that's all we can get, that's what people would like to know, when we can get improved. Whatever the phrase you want to use is we don't need the WISDOT study, we can do that on our own now, right? If we have the money.
We do not have, we do not currently have funds available for that. Those funds, at this particular point in the year, I, I think it would be difficult to, to do that marking. Not impossible. But that has not been the direction that the board has given to this point.
Okay, my, my understanding is we do have ARPA money left and we do have the Monsanto money left. And I just found out today we have interest money available. So we have literally probably over $200,000 available that we could use for this. Thank you.
Thank you. We can follow up with that as it would be a different agenda item. Thank you. I'd like to hear from other trustees, but I do see Gary Brunk and Vashti Lozier with their hands up. Okay. Mr. Brunk, could you say your name and address, please?
Gary Brunk, I think I just unmuted myself. Did I unmute myself?
Yes, you did.
18, Gary Brunk, 1827 East Kenmore. I'm the Chair of the Parks and Public Spaces Committee and I'm also one of the three people together with Vashti and Katie Now, who submitted the initial request for 13 improvements along Capital Drive that we thought would lead to some more safety for pedestrians. I just have one really brief comment about the importance of, of, of moving forward with the contract with the engineers. You know, I, I first thought that this was really an important issue in terms of children crossing Capital Drive because I have a granddaughter who now costs us a daily to go to the intermediate school. The last several weeks, my wife and I have been walking from our home to the pool, which requires that we cross Capital Drive. We tend to cross at the Crossing and Bartlett. Last Wednesday and then last Friday, two things happened that really emphasized to me the importance of doing something urgently with this. I was trying to cross, going across towards the high school. It took several cars for them to decide to stop. I had to actually step out into the, into the, into the crosswalk. After about seven cars passed, one finally stopped. I inched out slowly because I wasn't sure what was happening in the other lane. Five cars passed, finally one, one car stopped. I crossed, I got into the median and then that person was so pissed off that I had the temerity to be a pedestrian using the crosswalk that he honked his horn at me. This happens repeatedly. I know that there's no recent cases of anybody actually getting killed on Capital. I know the Department of Public, not the Department of Public Works, but the State Department of Transportation sort of looks for those injuries data to do things like slowing down the speed. But I think that somebody could very well get in a very serious accident. And I think that it's important that we get this engineering study done. It's important that we do a better job with signage along the street. And it's really important that we get the lights on the, on New Hall, the flashing lights so that we have those, those flashing lights on both sides of the street. And one of my questions is, is that really, I, I know that this was discussed at your September 5 meeting. Is there a schedule for getting those lights fixed so that they're up to code?
We are actually waiting for some contractual assistance. There is a new base that needs to be installed in the median area. The signs and the materials, I do believe we have taken shipment of. But we're work, as I mentioned, we're working on coordinating scheduling with the, with a vendor to assist with that.
Great, thanks Leanne. That's all I have to say.
Thank you Gary. Okay, and just a reminder that we are considering the scope of this engineering study this evening. Vashti Lozier, can you say your name and address, please?
Yes, Vashti Lozier, 2535 East Lake Bluff Boulevard. And again, thank you all for taking this important matter up and I don't want to take much more time on your long meeting, but I just wanted to mention that on that initial request on July 3rd, item four was intended to, for, to be triangles that said pedestrian crossing that would be painted directly on the roadway. So that as you approach from the east or the west, as you approach those crossings, you would have a visual. So it would be one of the standard ones that should meet the state requirements, but that was the intention of that. And I thought that was something that was discussed at that September 5th meeting. But I do think those would be very helpful. So that and the rapid flash, a flashing beacon, so I'm so glad that's underway. So, thank you.
All right. Trustee Stokbrand, do you have another comment directly related to the study?
I forgot to ask, I forgot to ask why we don't include Bartlett. To Mr. Brunk's point, I know it starts at New Hall and we're not including Bartlett and I'm wondering why. What, could we include Bartlett? Is that a problem? Could we add, and it'd be under 1A? And then I believe, um, yeah, just one. 1A and then D? 2D, could we add Bartlett? Make sure it extends through that area? I don't, do you know why Strand would have, or who made the decision to limit it without including Bartlett? Because that, that's the one directly across from the high school.
I can't say for certain why that was not included.
That'd be my recommendation then that we include Bartlett, please.
Okay, so when a motion is made, we can make that addition. Trustee Kudo?
Nope, uh, I'm ready for a motion. I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but I trust my colleague, one of my colleagues might.
Yep, I read it a minute ago or before the discussion, but let me reread it and include.
We do have a motion, we have a motion on the floor, right?
We have to go with what I read.
What's that?
Do we have to? We, we have a motion at a second, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was like, I thought I seconded it. I think that we're.
You did, right?
Yeah.
So a friendly amendment?
So can we take a friendly amendment to add to the RFP under 1A? Add a fourth intersection, Capital Drive and Bartlett, is that correct? Okay. Yep, I'm, I'm all for that. I made the original motion.
And I, my second will cover that as well.
Are we ready for a vote? Trustee Stokbrand?
I just wanted to see then on item 2D, as in David, calculate crash, segment crash rate for Capital Drive from Woodburn Street through, wouldn't we want that to be Bartlett instead of New Hall?
So actually, as I look at this, I'm, I'm thinking that the reason that and, and perhaps Vashti or Gary can correct me, that the original traffic and parking request did not address the closure of the Bartlett intersection. And that may be why Strand is focusing its attention on the intersections which were under consideration for closure to pedestrians, not to motorists. That, that would be my speculation.
Okay, so then that makes it all the more obvious that we need to add Bartlett because we're looking at not, we were not looking at closing it, but with that doesn't mean that we don't want to improve pedestrian safety there with perhaps a bump out, better signage, things like that.
Okay, so can we do another friendly amendment to 2D to calculate segment crash rate for Capital Drive from Woodburn Street through Bartlett?
Correct, thank you.
Okay.
And trustee Baldoff, do you have a second?
That's fine.
All right, I do see Barbara Kyla Miller with her hand up. Would you like to speak?
Thank you. Um, yeah, it's my recollection that a couple of years ago, we had some kind of grant to improve safety for students around the schools, high school as well as SIS. And that based on those recommendations, we deliberately took out that crosswalk at Capital and Bartlett to direct students to cross one block west of there. So that's why, you know, it seems like then we're undoing whatever, you know, safety measures we put in place last time. This is a couple of years ago with our former assistant manager, I think, heading up that project. So I'm not sure if any of the rest of you remember that, but it was deliberately taken out.
Yeah, I was on that, I was on that team, yeah. And, and you know, we, we came up with our report and, and at the time, the discussion was similar to what it is now, which is just that there are a lot of crosswalks in general. You know, if you can focus traffic to certain areas, but that, that's generally safer. But there, there wasn't like a formal motion from the Ped Bike Safety Committee to, to take anything away or anything like that, so.
Yeah, I think what we'll do that is, is note that in the record and go back to the scope of the engineering study or approval of the engineering study as presented and amended. All right, if there's no further comments or questions, we can take a vote. All those in favor say aye. I, oh, Director Bushley? Is it too late?
No. I, I just would like to ask procedurally if the additions to the scope of work change the, the total cost? Because that, that will change hours and I presume that will translate to a different cost. Do you wish to consider an amended motion that would not require us to bring that back to you again? And I'm sure there's a couple of ways you could do that. One, perhaps authorizing, you know, staff to approve with a certain increased dollar amount or I'm not sure how you want to handle that, but I, I just want to make sure that we're all under the understanding that, that the, that addition to the scope will likely increase the cost.
Thank you, I'm glad you brought that to our attention. Would the, we have options as far as we could hold it to see what the additional cost is and defer it to a future agenda? When that information is available or the amendment, the motion can be amended to give staff authorization to move ahead?
It would be my strong preference to give staff the authorization to move forward on this. Everyone, I think we are in the heat of agreement here. We have talked about this a whole lot of times. I don't think that we need to spend a lot of additional time bringing this back to the board. I think that we need to be efficient here, trust our staff. Everyone agrees this is a priority and let's move it forward.
Agreed.
100% agreement.
Okay, can you amend it as?
Okay, so a third friendly amendment to update the total cost to not exceed a cost approved by staff? I, I don't know how, that's not the right way to say that.
I think we have staff.
Or should I just say a friendly amendment to add that if additional costs exceed a certain dollar amount? Or are less than a certain dollar amount, staff can proceed at their discretion or something like that?
Yeah, and is there, is there any way to know? Like, do you have any idea what this would cost additionally to maybe give us a ballpark?
I don't. In fact, I texted Phil just to see if first, if he could answer the question about why Bartlett wasn't included, but I'm not getting a response, so. I don't, I can't imagine that it would be significant. I mean, I would be comfortable knowing what I don't really know. I guess if, if you authorize an amount up to $50,000, I would think that would cover it. But I don't know that for certain.
Okay.
Okay, instead of the 45, it'd be 50. For a second there, I thought of 50 additional.
I thought you said 50,000.
Well, that's.
One street.
Trustee Lynn, that's your amendment right there, buddy.
So just a friendly amendment to change that last number from $45,000 to $50,000. As the third amendment.
I am good with that unless just, do we want to make it a little bit higher just to be safe? But if you feel like that's already enough runway, Leanne, then great, but I would just, that's all.
I, quite, quite frankly, I think if it does get higher than that, I would be questioning what, what are they really looking at? This, this is not the most complicated study, you know what I mean?
Let's just, uh, move, move it.
Okay, so are we ready for the vote?
Yeah, let's take the vote again. All those in favor of the motion as amended three times, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to 9C. Consider professional services agreement for streetlight replacement program, engineering design, construction management and inspection services. This, two bids were received, one bid is being recommended. Everything's outlined and included within our materials. Do you have any questions from, for Director Bushlick on this? Or is there a motion?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I move approval of a professional services agreement for the streetlight replacement program, engineering design, construction management and inspection with KL Engineering in the amount not to exceed $398,800 for Phase 1 and 2 engineering and Phase 1 construction inspection.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Moore Baldoff, seconded by trustee Lynn, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to nine D, consider professional services agreement for CC phase two, construction, management, and inspection. Um any questions? This also comes to us from Director Public Works. Any questions for the director? Is trustee Stokebrand, is there a motion to approve?
I'm looking.
Okay.
I've got it on 190, page 194.
Uh I move approval of a professional services agreement for the 20, am I in the, I'm sorry.
Mm hmm.
2024 East Area Combined Sewer Phase Two Improvements, Construction, Inspection, and Project Management with Strand Associates in an amount not to exceed $498,000.
Okay, so second.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Lynn. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Last item of new business, nine E, consider the Shorewood Today service agreement. I believe trustee Arndorfer will recruit himself.
Not this time.
Not this time. All right, um any questions or emotion trustee Stokebrand?
Yeah, I had a question. Um first of all, um item number two, the service provider will um to a number two, and I would, can we remove the sentence that says advertising and editorial content determine the number of pages in each issue? And there should never be more than 40% advertising in an issue without stakeholder approval? I'm wondering why we have that limitation. It seems to me the goal, the goal here would be to have, you know, as much, get as much advertising revenue as possible, so this can be self sustaining and not subsidized.
Yeah, historically, it was um uh thought to be a reflection of the integrity of the product, um that it not be purely advertising, but have a um a significant amount of content.
I guess my feeling, that might be a pre-internet sensibility that doesn't really exist anymore. I, you know, I think the internet has changed advertising so much in the print world that this doesn't really apply anymore.
Well, thank you for the feedback, and when we recently called the Shorewood Today stakeholders together to kind of talk about, should we stick with that 40%? And I believe um Michelle is actually on as well, but when we met with the stakeholders, uh it was the sentiment of the group to just stick with the way we've done it, just because that's the product that the community's come to expect. Um Michelle, I don't know if you wanted to add anything else on that.
I'll echo what um what the two of you both said, that we do want to recommend that the quality of the magazine be maintained and not um not dip into that territory of being a shopper, want to keep it editorial heavy. Um and ever since our team has worked on the magazine, we've never exceeded 40% for advertising for that specific reason.
And I'll thank you for a new ad structure, so we'll see how this will change uh with the the new contract. Um I believe if Michelle, I'll also defer to you if you'd like to talk about that a little bit.
Sure, we usually um try to, we try to make the rates really affordable so that the local businesses can afford to advertise in the magazine. But um we are recommending a more fair price structure for next year. Um where the the smaller rate units will stay the same, but the larger units will go up a bit just to be more fair and incentivize advertisers to go bigger um for more efficiency, but um just uh to be smarter and more thoughtful about the pricing structure. While still including um discounts for businesses in the district and for advertisers that are in all four issues.
So have the other, have the other groups already approved this? Are we the last ones? Are we the first ones?
Well, it's coming out of the stakeholder meeting with the recommendation to approve.
So I would recommend that we make it no more than 50% advertising in an issue. I don't see advertising anymore as somehow demeaning or making it, making an a publication less. Um advertising can also be informative, and I'd like to see that number come up. I have one other item.
That.
I would say procedurally in the past, um I I would say that we are not in a position, I mean, certainly we can try, but I think that procedurally, if the, if this body agreed with that amendment, then what we would do is defer it back to um the stakeholder committee um to consider and then come to it, because it it does affect the other, what the other stakeholders vote on. Um so I would like to take that. So really, the choice is to vote on the motion as presented uh or the agreement as presented, or to make a motion to defer and take it back to committee.
Uh the other thing, I I mean, I just think it's time to bring this up to 2023. The other thing on number three, in addition to review and edit the article submitted to assure grammar, style, and language is consistent, I would like to add, in the interest of transparency, oversight, and accountability, every effort should be made to include costs and funding sources in editorial content pertaining to the five subsidized entities, the school district, the village, the bid, the CDA, and I believe the Shorewood Foundation. I think this just would provide more information that would be meaningful to the residents. And it's just advisory, you know? It says it, you know, to make every effort is my point, to include those, that item for content. It just gives it a little more gravitas.
Right, yeah, I guess I would. Um I, Michelle, you can definitely respond. Um I guess I would just say, at this point, I'm not comfortable making any um changes to the agreement. Um but we could provide that as advisory to the group and and somehow have it be considered. So Michelle, would you like to respond?
Uh I guess I don't, I didn't really understand uh the request that you were asking that there be more transparency in the editorial?
Right, so let's say you you're talking about a new piece of equipment that the school got or a new job position created at the bid or um a new program created at the library. It would always be more helpful if we could have transparency about the funding and and the cost of it for the for the residents. Because I see that missing a lot in the content. We don't know what the program, what the end thing, what the new thing costs and how it's being funded. And that would really add a lot of integrity to the product. I I'm sure, I'm sure that your editorial staff would embrace this.
Right, I imagine that information is always provided to us, but yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, trustee Stokebrand, what I would say is let's provide that as um advisory to the editorial um board, and then they can um proceed. It's a, it's a point well taken. Uh trustee Baldoff?
I just wanted to see if I could make a motion.
Certainly.
Okay. Uh I move to approve the service agreement for the production and design of the Shorewood Today magazine.
Second.
All right, motion by trustee more Baldoff, seconded by trustee Lynn. Any further discussion?
I would just like to to make a a specific note that I I'm not okay with the 50% advertisement suggestion. I'd much rather keep it at the 40.
Yeah, we are not making any amendments to the service agreement. Um that would need to um, we would need to take that a different direction.
Yep, good, good, good. Just making sure.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries five one. Thank you, Michelle. Good work. All right, that concludes new business for this evening. And so that takes us to reports of village officials. Um there is, uh the Milwaukee County released their video series on achieving racial equity. The um YouTube link is provided here. Myself and Deborah Blank are featured in two of the interviews. And so I wanted to bring that to your attention, but overall, it's it's just a really well done project and um I would encourage people to share the videos. Um other trustees? Trustee Stokebrand?
I was just wondering if we could have that historic preservation posted this week, um that presentation, that slideshow. I believe most of those documents are under the managers on the website.
Thank you.
Happy to.
Oh, and do we have an estimated date to be back in village in the courtroom?
We, whoops, sorry, my screen just went. Um we are still hoping for November and I will keep you posted.
That carpeting, right? Right. All right, other reports of village officials. All right, village manager?
No report.
All right, future items of consideration. I believe we have one coming from village manager uh this evening, which we did receive communication about. With um in the village manager's update, I believe, so. Would you like to add anything?
Nope, it's pretty simple.
Mm hmm. Appreciate, uh motion to approve the future item. Yes, trustee Stokebrand?
I'm sorry, so moved, I moved to to uh refer these health department space recommendation, future source of revenue for the space to the strategic initiatives committee?
I'll second. Uh motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by President McCabe. Um any discussion? I just think strategic initiatives is getting too busy, so I have concerns about that, but other than that, I'll let you guys manage that.
Will survive.
Okay, um all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Any other future items? Trustee Stokebrand?
Oh yeah, I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to present a proposal to refresh crosswalk paintings on West Capital Drive uh as soon as possible using ARPA money or Monsanto settlement funds.
I'll second that.
A motion by trustee Stokebrand, seconded by trustee Kudo.
Uh my only opposition to that is that I think it should probably go to uh the the part Public Works Committee first. Um should we change the motion to direct Public Works Committee to examine it and have them look at it and then send it to the board?
It seems that, didn't you already do this in August?
Well, there's also. Okay, I'll let you answer that question.
Well, we've just, I mean, we discussed some of it, yeah. I mean, we discussed the whole package and things like that, but not specifically repainting uh just Capital Drive.
Right, just refreshing the crosswalks.
Well, if you'll recall, within the scope of the uh budget discussion, um those markings were done last year. Leanne is in um communications with the vendor, the contractor, because they are not performing. Um they are slight, they are uh on a schedule to be redone the following year. My understanding is if that we can make um headway with the contractor, we may be able to get that redone um under a warranty or performance, you know, concern. Um and that would you know, be the the due diligence route. Um and that came up during the scope of the budget discussion. I think that directing Public Works to um consider the opportunities and the path forward. I would support that, but there has been enough discussion and there are enough technical aspects of it that um I think we, I think it would be appropriate to revisit it just to see where we're at with that decision. So that's what I, but as far as a full presentation with and approving the use of that money and all of that. I'm not comfortable with taking that step at this point.
I would support it in your public works. I mean, Jim, you said you would support sending it to Public Works? Yes. Yeah, they got from my perspective at this point, like, just had this discussion so many times in so many different places, but like it just seems like we're by sending, I mean, not that I'm opposed to sending it to Public Works, right, but we sent it to Public Works, it's going to go to Public Works in however many weeks, and it come out of Public Works, that's going to come back to the board however many, like, we just kicking this down the road and, you know, I mean, if there's a way for us to like fix, there's a problem that the paint is no good, right? If there's a way to fix the problem, if someone gets hit or there's a, there's an issue, no one's going to care that we waited because there was a chance that we might get reimbursed or that we might fall into a warranty. I'd rather just fix the problem that we all know is a problem. And then if we, if Leanne can work out something with the vendor for the next time or whatever, great, but you know, I I just feel like the longer we take on this stuff.
Well, it wasn't, yeah, I apologize, and this is out of the scope of a future item, so I'm not really sure how to proceed, and I would take some direction from perhaps village manager, but we talked about it, it was part of the capital budget discussion and to repaint, remark for $200,000, it was listed and it wasn't funded.
That was not, that was for the stripes, for the lanes and the bike, the bike lanes, and there was nothing for crosswalks. Crosswalks is different. Crosswalks, you hit the wall with the vendor.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that correction, my misunderstanding.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Well, the only option we have is to um, if we, we can put it on full board for the next village board meeting. I don't know what we can accomplish from then. The the urgency is heard and accepted. And I think that that's what we can do at this point.
Uh so the the motion would send this to the next village board meeting or send it straight to like Leanne's desk? Is that, what's the the goal?
My this would have to be budgeted for 2024.
No, no, it doesn't. We have the money.
Okay, so I.
So what what was your, what was your intention, trustee Stokebrand, with your motion? Was it to just send it straight to Leanne, to be worked on?
Public, to have public work, public work staff present a proposal, how it.
Okay, so we would get it.
Vendor, what would it cost? And we have money, we have the Monsanto settlement, we have ARPA money, we have money in.
So thank you for clarifying. I'm glad that we had this discussion because I didn't understand what was being proposed. I think I'm clear now, and hopefully everyone else is clear as well.
That makes, that, yeah, that makes a lot more sense, but I I thought we were just firing this off to to DPW to to just run out there with a can of paint, but this, that makes way more sense, so it would, we'd ask them to look at it, the deal with the vendor, whatever it is, get back to us next meeting and bam, we can go. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
With the intention of it having be implemented in 2023.
ASAP, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, and we had a second with trustee Kudo? All right, and we had a second with trustee Kudo. And can you read back the motion, please?
Do you want me to try and reread it?
Clerk.
My notes?
I'd like to know what clerk Carol.
Oh, okay.
And if she needs clarification, then, then of course we would return to that.
You definitely muted, one way or the other. Johnny, you're muted.
There it is, sorry. Trustee Stokian moved to direct staff to update the board and present a proposal of the cost to repaint the crosswalk. And it was seconded by trustee Kudo. I got lost in the conversation. I'm sorry.
So I, I moved to direct staff to present a proposal to refresh paint on the pedestrian crosswalks as soon as possible on West Capital Drive.
Thank you.
So in my view, present a proposal means cost, method, deadline.
And is this pertaining to just west of Oakland?
Correct.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Any other future agenda items? Hearing and seeing none, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second, I'll second that one.
All right, we'll give it to Kudo. So motion by trustee Stokian, seconded by trustee Kudo. Any objections? Hearing and seeing none, we are adjourned at 10:02.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.